Okay, and I have seven oh one, seven oh two. All this meeting is for the Alderman order. All those who can please.
Alderman Angel.
Here.
Alderman Foreman.
Here.
Alderman Lee.
Here.
Alderman Magley.
Here.
Alderman Simmons.
Here.
Alderman Norman.
Present.
Alright, we have a forum this evening if this is going to take place. Please join me in the present.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to say that it's been a decade since Trump. Consent agenda? I'll make a motion, did we approve the consent agenda?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, and we approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright. Account payable over twelve fifty.
I move we approve the accounts payable over one thousand two hundred fifty dollars in a grand total of two hundred ninety-eight thousand three hundred ninety dollars thirty-six cents.
Alright, now motion and second to approve accounts payable over twelve fifty in the amount of two hundred ninety-eight thousand three hundred ninety dollars and thirty-six cents. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, this time I'll open the floor for comments from citizens.
Just do anything here.
Okay. So, any other comments? Thank you for coming. Alright. Here are no further comments from citizens, I'll close that. Economic Development Report by Chair of Commerce.
We didn't have an actual meeting on Jenny Keller, Liz Stifelis, being the council packets, so I guess that will constitute a very poor.
Is that in here?
Yes.
It's in the second version.
Right up there.
And to follow up, the barbecue was.
Ah, okay. The Anchorage?
No.
No.
The Civil War fundraiser.
Oh, okay.
Through the Saturday.
It just.
Did it rain?
Yes, it rained.
I'm sorry.
But barbecue was good.
Alright.
For those who did, who were out there.
I guess that committee has a meeting scheduled for the twentieth?
Yes, sir, right.
Okay. And everybody's invited to that?
Uh, there were summitations set out at the dinner meeting.
Okay.
I could report that at the ready meeting last week, Sherri Rice talked about Hallsville sending out better than getting cable to support their attempt to attract manufacturers
Oh, okay.
weapons and ammunition. I don't know whether she did hers before Art went out, or I don't know the sequence on that, but I mentioned we were in the same boat. Somebody who is a colleague partner with Kurt Schaefer, who was highly supportive of that and had been pushing for it.
Okay.
Between Hallsville's ties to a world champion shooter and being close to the.
Reezal Shooting Club?
The Shooting Club where they could do test firings and stuff like that. And REZ and approximately the rail, something may come of it.
Right.
And I've had follow-up conversations with Stuart Berry from KIAA and the Missouri and.
Thank you very much.
Well, Berry may not thank me, but it's basically his ball run with, so I'm forward to tips to him.
Alright, thank you.
I will say that Anchorage, even though Friday was a little bit fizzle because of the rain, it wasn't a bad year. Certainly wasn't as good as last year, which was the highest sales ever. But Saturday and Sunday turned out to be pretty good. So, they were, they were both records. So even though we were down, it was kind of where we expected to be.
I know Saturday I was up there and it was fact.
Yeah. Sunday was by far the biggest day that we've ever had in ticket sales for the carnival.
Oh, good. I think, I think the train and the buses were well received. Had a lot of great comments from the people on the bus that showed up. A lot of them didn't even know since I was up here. I'm like, what? So.
That was pricing.
Yeah, that was good. Hopefully, we can continue that tradition in the next years. Alright. Public hearings. Anything scheduled there?
None, sir.
Alright. Extra agenda, plans?
None scheduled, sir.
Commitment licenses?
None scheduled, sir.
Legal, adopting collective bargaining agreement with Labor International Union of Local Seventy-seven Three?
Mayor, I do have one additional typo that needs to be fixed on the last line of section one. It says you will use an agreement two. And the word A needs to be stripped, and so it would just say agreeing to conduct an updated pay survey.
Okay. Alright. Alderman Simmons, would you introduce this one, please?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Bill number, please.
Twenty-six sixty-two.
I move that bill number twenty-six sixty-two be given its first reading by Title Homeing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second that bill number twenty-six sixty-two be given its first reading by Title Homeing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Continue, please.
A bill to create an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing ratification and approval of a collective bargaining agreement with Laborers International Union of North America at Local Seventy-seven Three. I move that bill number two-six-six-two be given its second reading by Title Homeing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second that bill number two-six-six-two be given its second reading by Title Homeing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Continue, please.
A bill to create an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing ratification and approval of a collective bargaining agreement with Laborers International Union of North America at Local Seventy-seven Three. I move that bill number two-six-six-two be given the adoptable roll call vote.
Second.
I have a motion and a second that bill number two-six-six-two be adopted by roll call vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Roll call vote, please, sir.
Alderman Angel.
Yes.
Alderman Foreman.
Yes.
Alderman Magley.
Yes.
Alderman Lee.
Yes.
Alderman Simmons.
Yes.
Alderman Norman.
Four.
Alright, by your vote, bill number two-six-six-two now becomes ordinance number.
Two-seven-two-nine.
Purchasing a replacement sanitation truck. And the quotation in our packet.
Large monumental explanations, sir.
Go for it.
Okay, first of all, the demo unit that we had a quote for, that's all.
Imagine that?
Yeah, that one, yeah. We have located a vendor that has one on hand. That was the second quote in the packet, the one from the. Not quite as many bells and whistles as the demo unit, but at least equal the one we lost to the buyer. And that is available and they'll hold it through tomorrow morning if you decide to purchase. That's one hundred and sixty-two thousand and forty-five dollars. We tried to shop around for anything else, there was nothing in the ballpark that wasn't long-used, somebody's trade-in. Or else we'd just have to order. This quote from Armor is not a hard and fast forward, a ballpark idea. The trouble with this, if we go that route, we probably have to go off for formal bids, lose a month. To get a chassis is now running at least a hundred and twenty days, and then you have to start the construction. Don't know what. I don't feel sorry for International Freight Line or Air Ford and all the rest, but that's the market. One of the companies, and I can't remember which one Phil told me, had parts that they were going to use for assembling more. And some dealer out of California came and purchased their whole stock.
Wow.
And I can make suppositions on why they're. People delaying purchases as long as they could, and now thinking that the economy's turning around or else having no choice, but. The choice you have really is to buy the one that's a burden-hand. A bit more expensive, or go off for bids, and you might get a little bit cheaper, but you figure it's gonna be six months. And we would be operating during that time with the repair truck, which should need one more wiring harness. So it's probably gonna be in the next week before we actually get that one. But that would be a truck we could operate with. You just security like the devils on the holidays and hope that nothing breaks down.
Right.
So, this is the best I can do. We go off for bids and wait the long-term or go with the burden-hand.
I move we approve the bid from Elliott Equipment for one hundred sixty-two thousand forty-five dollars.
Reluctantly, I would like to get. I'd rather do it for the four or five, but I'm taking it for the timeframe.
Okay, I have a motion. I have a motion and a second on the floor. Just want to point out, at the bottom here, it says administrative fee of a hundred and fifty dollars.
That's included in that price.
Is that included in that?
Now, I will, I will say one thing. The bosses there were not in today, so I don't know where that's at with Des Moines, Davenport, or Grandview.
Okay.
It's still gotta have the, um, the Kickstarter.
Kick pad or?
Yeah, the stuff we're lifting up, the individual carts put on.
Okay.
And that's included in the price, but we're gonna explore the possibility we might be able to go pick it up ourselves rather than spend the eight hundred dollars on freight. So, up two.
Okay.
Okay, should I amend that, then?
If you don't mind.
I don't mind.
Okay. As a matter of.
We'll send them out.
Okay, I would like to amend my motion.
Okay.
To accept the bid from Elliott Equipment Company, up to one hundred sixty-two thousand forty-five dollars.
Alright, thank you. I have a motion and a second to accept the bid from Elliott Equipment in the amount of up to one hundred sixty-two thousand forty-five dollars. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
What does that do or, I assume that taps pretty well all of our customer trucking insurance and everything?
Um, I'm guessing at what it's going to cost humanly with Dane and so with the true. We had originally thought that we'd end the year eighty thousand. Well, end last year with eighty thousand. About the same as this year. Anyway, drops to a very over only thirty, but we start building back up. But on the other hand, pushes time when we have to replace the truck out by at least four years. So, it's a trade-off.
Right.
Okay.
Sir, if you have a question, does this come with any type of warranty?
It's a new truck, so it comes with warranty. Probably. I did not specifically ask about this, so. Extended warranties, well, it's optional. I would say it's probably a standard, which would be, if I recall, one year. Plus on the trucks, the engines and those, our family will have a next three or five-year warranty.
Okay.
I'll email everybody when I.
That sounds fine. It was just a question I thought of.
It's a valid question.
Alright, water meter radial retranspondence. If we talk about ordering large packs of those.
You will note that if you order the full amount that Mike Kenzie needs to replace all the existing stock that's less used and is going dead, the price drops from sixty-nine dollars and fifteen cents to sixty-six dollars. Five percent savings? And I've looked through and yes, I'm not recommending we do the whole retrofit, that's kind of absurd right now. But just to get the transpondence to give better percentage readings would be twenty-eight thousand and fifty dollars. If the water pump can't carry that, waiting we don't get two more subdivisions doing further phases and have to put a lot of, we can do pipe, we shouldn't have a difficulty. So we recommend it.
Well, I'm assuming that the last phase that went in on the subdivision in southeast Park County.
Dogville?
Yeah, that'll probably be the last for this year, I would assume. And the only other one I know of is Southwest is going to do. The plots down there, and that's not what you're meant to allow. So. I do think at some point we're gonna have to look at pushing the cost of water lines to the developer, which is where everybody else is. Although we need to do that at this point.
It's noted my possible revisions to the subdivision range.
Okay. Something we have talked about last week. Haven't had any urgency.
Probably need to revise the tap fees after too, because right now, we don't recoup the cost of a meter, a transplant, and a meter jar, much less the copper line for a cap. And they have not been changed in thirty years.
Yeah, could I, probably something to be to look at earlier.
Yeah, it's a different ordinance.
Something different ordinance, yeah.
Okay.
I have a question for clarification.
Mm-hmm.
The four hundred and twenty-five pigtails? I guess the.
That's the connection between the meter up to the unit that's on top. Yeah, the little flat saws or shape.
What's the second four hundred and twenty-five units?
That's as if we replace the meter too. The physical metal meter exists down in there.
Down in there?
Yeah.
I could save on splice kit and programming. Is that what, is what he's got in there?
Uh, we have the equipment to do that in-house.
But, yeah, but I mean, that's something that he's normally done.
Yes.
That would just be an option if we wanted to do a lot of like. Yeah, we're just.
No.
I, I don't see the advantage.
We might pick up a couple of gel tubes, but that's not.
There's really no advantage to doing the second option at all.
No, sir. No, I'm not.
Okay, I was confused by.
From a financial standpoint, I wouldn't, this isn't the way the bid came in.
And operationally, we were.
We don't either.
We don't need it. That's what I was trying to get clarification on.
Well, the budget will stand it, and I would make a motion that we accept the bid for the four hundred and twenty-five units at twenty-eight thousand and fifty dollars.
Right.
Okay. Alright, I have a motion and a second to accept the bid from Midwest Legging Incorporated for four hundred and twenty-five Orion units for a total of twenty-eight thousand and fifty dollars. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright. Old business? Any Alderman, or anyone, anyone have old business? New business? Mayor appointments? Is that a few tonight? Uh, I'd like to appoint Richard Dickerson. Reappoint him to the park board for a term of three years, starting June first.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to accept the mayor's appointment of Richard Dickerson to the park board for a three-year term. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And next is Lori Peedler to the same post for three years. I have a motion and a second to accept the mayor's appointment of Lori Peedler to the park board for three years. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And, once again, for Bev Reynolds, same.
Senator.
Aye.
I have a motion and a second to accept the appointment of Bev Reynolds to the park board for a term of three years. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright. Alright, next is the Cemetery Advisory Committee. I would like to reappoint Grant Pauli to the advisory committee for a term of three years. He's the main first. All those.
Will make that motion?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to accept the mayor's appointment of Grant Pauli to the Cemetery Advisory Committee. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I was. Alright, and same thing for Amelia Roberts.
Senator.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to accept the mayor's appointment of Amelia Roberts to the Cemetery Advisory Committee for three-year term. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Those reappointments, just the same as the question for us?
Yes. Okay. With my schedule at work and the Mid Missouri Solid Waste Management District Council, I'm electing to resign from that council, Detective Dida. And I've asked Alderman Simmons if she would assume that position.
So you're making that appointment of Alderman Simmons?
Yes.
Senator, do you in order of motion to approve the appointment?
Oh, senator.
Alright, I have a motion and a second to accept the mayor's appointment of Alderman Simmons to the Mid Missouri Solid Waste Management District Council. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, thank you very much.
Well, April two thousand fifteen, she would fill that vacancy.
Right.
That's provided that she is still on, doesn't need to be an Alderman or the mayor. If she would not be on the board as of next year, then there would be another vacancy.
Okay. Thank you. And I'll get you to contact your friends and. Thank you. Alright, that concludes the appointments for this evening. I still have, I still have a tree board and word adjustment. Oh, yes, and temporary ad hoc committee. That Lynn's been telling about.
Well, just a couple people look on my shoulder after the twenty-eighth when we open the proposals for selling one oh five North Allen.
Okay.
Since it's not quite, high price, my best proposal, a little interest of community, we need a couple, at least two extra eyes on that.
Okay. Do you would like to volunteer for that? Can you raise your hand? Okay. Like to appoint Alderman Simmons and Alderman Foreman to that committee and call us clear. We'll make every effort to be here.
When I have them and hoping them, which will probably be the following Monday.
Okay.
I'll let you know, and then you can hold the sign when we get together.
Alright, thank you.
The other ad hoc committee would be to receive and examine on the same day, so likely in the following week. Request for proposals for engineering services, to do work on city hall, so we put out for bid next fiscal year. And most of the work will be associated with major repair, roof repair, KDA features for city hall, plus the ramp to the police station.
Okay.
And some sort of handicap accessible feature for the visible.
Okay. Okay, if you would like to be on that ad hoc committee, seeing if I'm already ready.
You can be on the twenty.
Uh, no, that's the deadline to receiving the proposals.
Right, this will be a different, we'll get there and take a date that will look at the plan that you talked about.
In that case, I can, in both cases, I can take all of the proposals, Xerox them into a packet, and send them out to people to look at before we get together to discuss them.
Okay. So, who wasn't there that committee? Alright, these three, anybody on this side? Alright, looks like the right side. We don't need a motion or anything to be, these are right.
I mean, I think your appointment is sufficient, there's nothing that's in the city code about it, so.
Okay.
If they're willing to serve and you made that appointment, I think that's fine.
Okay, so.
It'll all come back to the board for ratification anyway.
Right, okay, thank you. Thank you all. Alright, new business for the Alderman. Anything? Alright, Lynn, new business?
Old business, trash truck's gone.
Oh, okay.
I only got it out of here. They had to go up out of burden to get to the highway. They had to get it out of there with a very long trailer.
Oh, dear. Okay.
That's all, sir.
Alright, thank you. Mayor?
Yes, uh, just to.
Hello, good day, Ellen, thank you.
Just something that was brought up at the General Government Meeting. I have spoken briefly with Chief Dudgeon and with Lynn and about the impoundant fee ordinances, and we will have something ready, a draft of the ordinance to revise the annual impoundant fees at the next committee meeting, the General Government Meeting. Secondly, an update about the Marin Antha Church situation. I was successful in obtaining a new telephone number for the contact person, Richard Wright. And he has told me that he's promised that he will be cutting the grass on there no later than this coming weekend.
Okay.
Can he any closer to signing that nobody does?
Or to anybody?
Or to anybody?
Well, not, not, it's selling it to, it's not signing over, it's selling.
Well, I don't care what he does with it.
That, that's the next step, he's gonna, he's, we're gonna set up a time to meet to get back my track on that.
Okay.
But I know that the most important thing was getting the grass cut, and that's, he said he would, he apologized. He, he's an over-road trucker, and he'd had some things go on in his life, he said, he didn't elaborate, but he's, he said he would get the grass cut no later than this weekend.
Okay. And, yes. Mr. Dillarosa, will he be on the weekend, right?
He's in class. He's got that for the next three days.
Oh, okay.
He will be, as reported, he will be here on the first of July.
That's right.
Which isn't a committee, but any day I can get him to come.
Okay, that's fine, thanks. I remember you saying that now there. Okay. Anything else, man?
That's it.
Alright, Heather? None?
No.
Oh, thank you for coming back. Alright, any as mayor rises?
Just one little thing, I'm sure sitting in this turn I had to figure out, but if you need transportation to go to Des Moines, or need someone to go get that truck, you just have to. Six months, I mean, I know that's what you got off your sleeve. I'm just telling you, you need somebody to jump the car, that's when she.
Do they have to have a CDL?
Yeah. No, I can answer that.
Okay.
It's my business.
Nope, that's fine.
Because.
You don't take one person to drive, another person up there, not person.
Ah, okay, okay. That makes sense. Thank you.
I'm just telling you, you do what you want to do, if you're getting the tight, you need somebody to jump the car and go, I'm your guy.
It may not be Des Moines, it may be Grandview, which I, would be my.
Where?
Grandview.
Kansas City. Well, you can do that in reverse.
Any other as mayor rises? I got one, you all should add a purple or pink note on your desk about as little flags will be displayed during the Fourth of July holiday. We'll be putting the flags up on Monday, July first, at five o'clock. And many, many hands make light work. So the more people show up, the quicker it goes. And also, there's going to be tickets down on July fifth at five P.M. So again, many hands make light work.
So again, many hands make light work, more people get out there, the, uh, quicker it goes, and, alright, that's all I have at this point.
And who we drew?
Second. I have a motion and a second to lead adjourn, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, any adjourn, thank you very much. Okay, was this where?